Good morning. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via Webex, an online digital platform, and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via Webex and who can be seen and heard are: Lisa Valentini, Peter Reed, and Larry Clay. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the Webex platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing registered in advance and will be connecting through Webex using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be through audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 4553 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for: variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment, Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. All Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, also known as T-Lab, or, in some limited circumstances, to the local planning appeal tribunal, known as L-PAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation, if required, and the committee may ask questions and/or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note: The committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearing been confirmed by the members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Members and staff, are there any interests to declare in the first-time slot?
No, Madam Chair.
Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurers, are there any requests to withdraw an application or deferrals?
There are no requests for deferral or to close a file. Before we begin, Madam Chair, I just have a few announcements. First of all, my name is Anita MacLeod. I'm the manager and deputy secretary treasurer for the Committee of Adjustment. I am in the room with the chair. We also have our host of the Webex event, which is Jacob Cockrell, and our presenter, which is Ram Bulger. For those of you watching on YouTube, if you would like to follow along and view materials, you can use the agenda page that's posted on the C of A website under our hearing schedule. There's an agenda there, and on each of the addresses, there's a link. If you click the link, it will take you to the application information, and you can look at the materials there. For agents and other attendees, please pay attention. There are no time slots today, and we could move quickly, so you'll need to pay attention because we have no way of getting your attention if you've stepped away from your computer or your device that you're using to connect. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer. The first item is 1306 King Street West. The purpose of this application is to alter an existing two-story mixed-use building by converting the vacant space on the ground floor and in the basement into a place of amusement, specifically a golf simulator. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from Max Murchason, the agent, email correspondence from transportation, as well as planning, and correspondence in support from Number 314 and 304 King Street West. Okay. Mr. Murchason, if you could just state your name for the record and your address, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, committee. My name is Max Murchason, and I represent the sand trap 1306 King Street West.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation? Do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay. We have no questions, and we don't need a presentation, so we'll take it into committee for a decision. Panel members, do you have any comments?
I'll start. I thought this was a fairly straightforward application. A good use of this site. I know this area, and it looks like it would be an effective use along here. I am convinced on the parking issue that this is available by pretty regular public transit, and it's walkable from pretty high residential areas, like Liberty Village. So I don't think the concern about parking is one that is going to break this deal. So I kind of supported it.
Okay, any other comments?
I think this is... No, I think this is very minor and agree with Larry's point.
Okay, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, sure. I'll move approval. I noticed that Transportation has written on this one, but they don't have any conditions. So I'll move approval of this application.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Okay, your application has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, the committee. Have a good day.
Thank you, same to you. Okay, the next item is Item Number 2, 117 Benson Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached garage located at the rear of the lot and having access from a rear laneway. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from Forestry asking for Condition Number 2 and one form letter in support from 117, which is an adjacent property. Could I have the agent, please, give us his or her name and address for the record?
Hi, my name's Othrins Tambook. I'm at 1410 Dupont Street, Unit 905. I'm the agent of the owner.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation? Okay, do you have any questions of the agent?
Sure, this is Peter Reed. Just a clarification. There's a bathroom and shower, excuse me, in the proposed garage. Can you explain why that's there?
Absolutely. So the primary intent of that bathroom... One of the primary intents is that when there are backyard gatherings, there is a space that can be used quickly for any guests to access the washroom. The washroom has a shower because it's a convenient thing to have in a garage for washing off its equipment and various things, dogs, things like that, that can be used in there. So it was requested by the owner to add a shower for various cleaning needs.
So the intent is to use it as a garage, but not as a secondary residence?
Definitely, there is no intent to use it as a secondary residence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions?
No, I saw that too. I wondered the same thing. So just to the applicant, does the garage currently have water and sewer hookups to it? Or are you planning to construct those?
Yeah, those will be constructed, and they'll be taken from the primary dwelling and brought through the backyard and brought into the garage.
Okay. I would just make the point, I don't know if we have a... I mean, there is always that concern that sometimes these things get converted into accommodation space. So I kind of agree with Peter that, you know, I don't know if we put a condition on that, but it should be noted that this is not to be used as accommodation. It is solely for car storage.
I would agree that... I mean, it does look like it's kind of perhaps the beginning of a laneway suite. So I would agree that it would need a condition that it can't be used as habitable space if the committee's leaning in that direction.
I would agree with those comments as well. That was one of my concerns when I saw the plan, was the... Not just the toilet, but the shower. So I think the condition that it not be used as habitable space would alleviate any of those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, the other way we could go is... I mean, we could have no connection, sewer, like water connections, if I guess we want to be 100% sure. That's another option. If it's only going to be used as a garage, I'm not sure why you need a shower there.
I can see the washroom and shower being a handy thing to have. So I would support approval with the condition that it not be used for habitable space.
Okay, well, I'll leave it in your hands, one of you, to make a motion, and we'll see what happens.
Sure. I'd put forward a motion to approve, subject to urban forestry condition number 2 and the condition that the garage not be used for habitable space.
Okay, I have a motion to...
Second it?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve with the forestry number 2 condition and the condition that it cannot be used as habitable space, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? I'm going to dissent. Okay, so your application has been approved, sir? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is Item Number 3, 29 Tracy Street. Okay, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by adding a rear third-story addition in the form of a greenhouse. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a letter of explanation from Stan Sota, the agent, a staff report from the acting supervisor, tree protection, and plan review, and I believe they're asking for Condition Number 2, correspondence in support from Number 31 Tracy, and five form letters in support from 26 Sidenham, 371, 379 Shooter, and 140 Sackville Street. The applicant can state his name, please, for the record?
Yes, my name is Stan Sota. I'm the applicant, and I live at 65 Glen Aiden Avenue, East in Atobicoke.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sota. Panel members, do you need a presentation on this one? Any questions of the applicant? No? All right, we'll take it into committee for a decision then. Any discussion, comments?
I don't mind starting out on this one. This one is just really straightforward.
Just one second, Ms. Valentini. Madam Chair, I don't show one on my sheet. Just bear with us one second, just making sure nobody wanted to speak to this item.
Just to the applicant, just quickly. This is a semi?
Mr. Sota? Mr. Clay is just asking if it's a semi.
It is a semi.
Sorry, I can barely hear you, Mr. Sota. Can you speak up a little bit?
It is a semi. Can you hear that?
Yes, I can hear. So just to be clear. So have you discussed this proposal with the owner of the adjacent semi?
The owner has, and I don't have any written confirmation, but there's no issue.
Okay, thank you. If we're okay? All right, so we can go back into committee. We verified that we don't have anyone on record that would like to speak. Okay, Ms. Valentini, you have the floor.
Sure. I think this one is very straightforward and minor in nature. You're adding a very small greenhouse addition to the existing footprint. I think it's going to be on the existing third-floor deck. I also noted from a review of the plans and the materials that the existing FSI in this case is well over 1.0. It's at 1.47, I believe. So I think the addition of about nine meters square or so is very minor in nature. So I would be a supporter of this application.
Okay. Any other comments? Would you like to make that a motion, Ms. Valentini?
Yes, I'd love to make that a motion for approval, subject to, I believe, urban forestry condition number 2.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Peter, was that you, that seconding?
That was me, excuse me, yes.
No problem. I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number 2, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item Number 4, 39 Craven Road. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story townhouse by adding a rear two-story addition, a front basement walkout, and a rear deck. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, email correspondence from community planning, and a staff report from tree protection. They're asking for forestry number 2, and five form letters in support from Number 33, 37, 43 Craven Road, as well as 22 and 26 Rhodes Avenue. Could I have the agent, please, state his name and address for the record?
Morning, Madam Chair. Jay Smith, I'm the agent for 39 Craven Road.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any... Do you need a presentation, first of all? Any questions of the agent? No questions? Okay. If there are no questions, we'll take it into committee. Did you have a question, Ms. Valentini?
I did, I did.
Go ahead.
I was just reviewing my notes. I was just wondering about the purpose of the front basement walkout. I think the plan said the basement's to be used with the first floor. Is this is one unit or two units?
It is one unit. It is an in-law suite. They have... Because of COVID, they've already moved an elderly parent in early, but it is for an elderly parent.
And the need for the basement walkout is to accommodate the...
They're trying to create some form of separation for the elderly parents so they have some ability to come and go without having to interact with the entire house all the time. But it is definitely not for rental accommodation, and there will be the declaration signed that it is a single-family building.
And are there any variances associated with the walkout, or...
There aren't. No, there aren't. The front yard setback is an existing condition for the existing front porch and balcony that are going to be rebuilt, but it is an existing condition.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll take it into committee. Any comments?
Sure. I'm looking at the list of variances. It's a decent number of them, but I think Craven Road is a strange street, right? And we... Applications come up for this often. I think because the lots are so shallow, it kind of requires us to be a little more open-minded around how these lots can be developed in a way that is functional. So I think the fact that this is only an additional several feet in depth and kind of matches up with other properties in the area, I think it's probably reasonable, so I would support it.
Okay, any further comments?
Yeah, I agree. It looks like it fronts onto a laneway, huh? Which is an unusual... So they look out from the front onto someone else's backyard, which is kind of unique. I would just, again, make the observation that, you know, putting an entranceway, basement entranceway on the front facade, I guess technically is something that the city's trying to avoid. I would agree that in this context and in this location, it obviously seems to make sense. So I would agree with Peter's perspective on this one.
I would just weigh in and say I agree with Mr. Reed. It's a very eclectic street. It's a very unusual street. I did notice there was one walkout toward the end. I did see there is one. So this is not setting a new precedent. But the houses are all very different and very close together, and there's not a lot of room to do a lot of adjustments. So I think what's being proposed is appropriate as well.
So, Mr. Reed, do you want to make that a motion, or...
Yes, please. I move to approve, subject to urban forestry condition number 2.
Okay, do I have a second, or...
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Your application has been approved.
Very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is 403 Quebec Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached garage at the rear of the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling, and access to the garage is by way of a right-of-way. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a... Forestry's asking for Condition Number 2, and we have support from... It's a numbered company. I don't see an address here. From Ingo Koonberg. Okay, if the agent can please identify himself for the record?
Good morning, committee members. My name is Murray Fern. 23rd Road, Toronto, Ontario. I'm representing the owners of...
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation on this one? No? Are there any questions?
I just had a quick question, as Lisa Valentini's speaking. In terms of the footprint of the garage, is it more or less matching what the existing garage? Give or take a bit, but that's sort of how I read the plans.
Exactly right. It's almost identical to the existing garage. Just a little bit.
Can we just confirm the letter of support? Is that a neighbor?
Yes, it's the neighbor, I think, at 401...
401 Quebec Avenue?
That's where, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all we have is... It's a Cora Broadhurst and an Ingo Koonberg, and then there's a Ontario Limited. There's no address, so... Okay.
So is that the neighbor that you share the right-of-way, or your client shares the right-of-way with in terms of access to the garage?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that's...
Sorry, I can't hear what you just said.
Mr. Fern, we can't hear you at all. Are you there?
Hello? Hello?
Yes, yeah, I can very, very faintly hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the Number 401 which has the right-of-way with us.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions, panel members? Okay, let's take it into committee. Any discussion and a motion?
I'm prepared to weigh in on this one. This seems like a very minor application. They're looking for a slight increase in total floor area and height. I don't see there being any impact. And in fact, it looks like the proposed garage almost matches the existing... The footprint of the existing garage. The adjacent neighbor has no issues that we heard of that shares the right-of-way, so I don't see there being any issue with this one, from my perspective.
I would agree. It's a pretty big lot, too, in this neighborhood, right?
Okay, do you want to make that a motion, Ms. Valentini?
Sure. Yep, I'm happy to make that a motion for approval and subject to urban forestry condition number 2.
Okay, is there a second, or...
Yeah, I'll second that.
That was Mr. Clay, right?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number 2, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Your application has been approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Okay. Next item is Item Number 6, 68 Lindhurst Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by reconstructing rear walls of the first and second stories that were determined to be structurally unsound, replacing an existing rear third-story dormer and constructing a rear third-story dormer to accommodate an elevator. Panel members, the committee has before it the following: copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; six photographs of the subject property and the neighborhood context; and an aerial map illustrating letters of support; a covering letter from Max Laskin, the solicitor; existing residence exterior walls review, prepared by Gamali and Associates; a staff report from Forestry asking for Condition Number 2, as well as two form letters in support from Number 70 Lindhurst and Number 5 Wells Hill Avenue. If I could have the solicitor, please, identify himself for the record?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of committee. My name is Max Laskin, and I am counsel to the owners. I'm from Goodman's L.P.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation?
No.
Any questions?
Sure, I'll... I just have a quick question. I guess more confirmation after reviewing the materials. Is there really the first two variances relating to FSI and side lot setback? Are those existing conditions? More or less, I know the FSI you said is going down, or I read somewhere it's going down slightly. But more or less, the only variance we have before us is for the main wall height at the rear?
That's correct. The two variances relating to FSI and GFA do reflect existing conditions as the recommendation from the engineer was to replace existing rear walls that were structurally unsound. And so that's exactly what's proposed, simply replacing those walls in the locations that they exist today.
Any further questions, panel members? All right, let's take it into committee. Any comments and/or a motion?
Look, this looks quite minor, I think, to all of us, and frankly, quite responsible of the owner and engineer to actually make sure that the walls are structurally sound, so this seems very straightforward in my view, so Lisa, did you want to make a motion, or?
I'm happy for you to make, sure, I'm happy to make a motion if you don't want to. I'm good with that. So I'll bring a motion forward for approval of the application. I agree with what Mr. Clay has said. It is very straightforward. The conditions are existing, except for the slight increase for height for, I think, an elevator shaft, so the motion is for approval, and it's subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Okay, and are you seconding that, Mr. Clay, then, or?
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion, sure. I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, your application has unanimously been approved. The next item, item number seven, is 45 Ingham Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by underpinning the basement and constructing a new front porch and rear yard patio. Hang on a second. Okay, my mistake. I, we are taking a break right now until 11 o'clock, and then we will be doing 45 Ingham Avenue. Okay, thank you. So we stand in recess until 11 o'clock.
Volume on this computer is off.
All devices should be off except for...
Is that volume off?
Yes.
On for that computer? It's on mute?
Computer volume is off, mic is off.
Okay.
As long as I have that mic set off, it should be...
Right, but do you have to put the computer volume on when you're...
Talking.
When you start WebEx again?
No, stays off. Every volume related or microphone related thing is done through there.
Oh.
Or through this laptop over there.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens. Maybe it has something to do... Okay, the next item is item number six, sixty-eight Lindhurst Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling. Okay, my apologies. We already finished that item. So, item number seven, forty-five Ingham Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by underpinning the basement and constructing a new front porch and rear patio. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from Helen Vorster, the agent. Correspondence in support from number forty-four and forty-three Ingham Avenue. And another form letter from number forty-seven. If I could have the agent please identify herself for the record.
Hi, good morning. I'm Helen Vorster. I live at one fifty McNell Avenue, and I'm the agent for forty-five Ingham Avenue.
Thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation on this item? No? Do you have any questions of the agent? No questions?
Just a quick, so you're also doing a rear yard patio, but there is no variance required. The variances are specific to the front porch, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll take it into committee. Any discussion?
I'm happy to weigh in on this one. This one seems fairly straightforward. They're proposing to, in terms of the variances, to reduce the front yard landscaping and increase the floor space index. And I think that's relating to probably the underpinning and the new front porch. But in terms of front porch, I see that being this proposal, in my view, would meet the four tests of a minor variance. I did note when I reviewed the material that the current front yard landscaping existing is at fifty-three percent. So they're bringing it up to fifty-nine percent in this proposal. So they are actually improving the situation. There looks like a fairly small front yard in any event, and the porch, existing porch takes most of the front yard out. So I have no issues with the front yard landscaping variance. As well, I didn't have any concerns with the proposal for increase in floor space index. I think it's in keeping with what's going on in the neighborhood. And again, I think that's probably triggered by... Or I did note the existing floor space index is at points of a nine, so it's already over. So I'm supportive of this application.
Okay, any other comments? Okay.
I agree with Lisa's point, so I would second that motion if you put it forward.
Okay.
There you go. If I could get my mic, I'm muted. Yes, I will bring a motion forward for approval of the application.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application has been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight, twelve Hewitt Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear basement addition, a ground-level deck, a rear third-floor deck, a rear basement walkout, and a new rear shed. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a forestry report. There are no conditions because they were unable to do the inspection due to COVID-19. So that could be a future discussion with the applicant or agent. And there is a correspondence in opposition from number fourteen Hewitt Avenue. If I could have the agent identify himself, please, for the record.
Good morning, committee. My name is Roy Vance of Fluid Living Studio. We're the designer responsible for the drawings, and we're acting as agent on behalf of the client.
Okay, I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that for staff? They went a little too fast, so if you could just repeat it.
Sure. So my name is Roy Vance.
Yeah.
Of Fluid Living Studio.
Uh-huh.
We're the designer. And we're acting as agent for twelve Hewitt Avenue.
Okay, can you tell me, we have on record, because as you know, you have to register in advance to speak. We have an Eric Hayden registered as the agent. Do you know where that...
He's putting staff in first. He is beside me.
He's beside you? Can you just have him maybe? Well, identify himself as being there at least.
Hello, yeah.
So in the future, like if you're not sure who's going to speak, maybe both of you register then? And then at least it'll be... Well, actually, staff is saying just pick one and have that person register.
Okay, yeah, we weren't aware of that, so...
Yeah, things are a little different now with the virtual hearings. So it's, we only allow one person to present the application.
Okay, would I be able to present the application at this point?
Yeah, I'll make an exception today, but for future, please, just one of you, okay?
Okay, understood. Thank you very much.
Okay, but I may not need a presentation? Let me check with my members. Panel members, do you need a presentation of this application?
I'm fine.
Okay, are there any questions, panel members? No?
No.
Okay, Mr. Clay, are you okay, or do you have a question?
No, I'm fine with this, thanks.
Okay, so we'll take it into committee then? Any discussion?
Yeah, I thought this one was quite minor. I think the shed is way in the back, and the setbacks around that, I think, are not a concern, given there's a garage on the neighboring property to the rear. And then the setback questions around the stairs are a little reflecting the kind of, the current alignment of the house. And the depth is just an additional meter and a half. So I think in sum, it doesn't concern me. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I guess I should probably have asked this question of the applicant.
Okay, did you want me to come out of committee, and you can ask the question?
Just quickly, yes, that's okay.
Okay, so Mr. Vance, Mr. Clay has a question of you, so...
I just noticed that there was, your neighbor registered some concern. I guess about the third story and whether there would be a trellis constructed over top of that deck and the concern about shading. So did you see that?
Yes, we received a copy of it, and we have no plans to put a roof or a trellis above that deck. We don't need a variance for the deck. And we're actually enclosing the deck with forty-two-inch-high glass guards. So sunlight will pass through. There won't be any shade issues.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back into committee then. Are there any other questions? If not, Mr. Reed, I don't know if you're ready to move a motion.
I am, but how do you want to deal with the urban forestry? It seems kind of up in the air. Should we put in a condition number two just to be safe?
Yeah, we can, if you want to put it on to be safe, sure.
And it would be at their discretion, urban forestry's discretion, to say yes or no? Okay, sure, I'd move a motion to approve subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Okay, motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, the application has unanimously been approved.
Thank you, committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is number four, Bloom Avenue. Purpose is to construct a rear one-story detached garage. And panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and no further correspondence. If I could have the agent please identify himself for the record.
Yes, very good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Nelson Espinola. He is the agent for this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Espinola. Panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Okay, are there any questions of the agent?
I had a question, actually. If you think to me, I don't know, maybe I'm just not getting it from the plans. The variances, the variance relating to driveway width. There is a driveway? I just, can you explain that to me, please?
Yes, there is. My understanding is that the width of the driveway cannot be more than 4.19 meters, and we're at 4.75. than 4.19 meters, and we're at 4.75. So basically, our driveway is the full width of the garage at the rear, and that's what's creating this variance. It's a small difference, approximately 0.5 meters. And I think the reason for this is because we are, the driveway is the full width of the garage.
Okay, but how do you access, maybe I'm missing it from, I'm looking at the plans. How do you access the garage?
Well, the initial access at the very rear of the lot is approximately eight feet or 2.4 meters, and then it sort of widens towards the garage.
I see. Okay, thank you. I see that now. Thank you. That was my only question. I was a little bit confused about where that was, but I see that now in the plans. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Do you have any further questions, panel members?
No, just echoing Lisa's point, I think it was a bit confusing because there's a laneway, but then I think a parking lot behind that as well. So I was confused as well, but I think it's just because it's the last house on the lane, kind of, that it has that kind of strange treatment. But thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? If not, we'll take it into committee. Any comments?
Sure, I'll weigh in. I think it's reasonable. I was kind of concerned about the area of the garage, 23% instead of the 10% that's allowed, but I think that has to do with the site, and, I mean, the fact that the garage is not, the FSI of the garage is not an issue, and not requiring a variance, that gave me some comfort. So I think it's reasonable, and I would support it.
Okay. Are there any other comments? If not, Mr. Reed, you're free to make a motion.
Sure, I'll put forward a motion to approve with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the application moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Your application has unanimously been approved.
Thank you.
The next item, which is the final item this morning, is 28 Frankdale Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by enclosing the front porch. The committee has before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and a previous decision affecting this property. If I could have the agent identify himself, please?
Hi, Ian Pennicott, 28 Frankdale. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of the owner? Do you need a presentation? No? Okay.
No, I don't need a presentation.
All right, well, we'll take it into committee then for a decision.
I'm happy to make some comments on this one. This one, I believe, is very straightforward. They're enclosing the existing, proposals to close the existing front porch, and the attached neighbor, it looks like, has an enclosed front porch as well. So in my view, this is going to match. It's going to make the two houses look more similar in nature. So I think this is, clearly meets the four tests of a minor variance. I have no issues with this one.
Did you want to move a motion?
Yeah, I would agree. I'd agree. It's very straightforward, and quite minor, and consistent with the neighborhood, so I agree with Lisa's point.
Yeah, I agree. This is very minor, so, and it's, it is going to be, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm happy to bring a motion forward.
It's kind of, there's a bit of a delay when we speak, so, anyway, go ahead.
I'll bring forward a motion for approval of the application without any conditions.
Okay. Do I have a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the application moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Your application has unanimously been approved.
Thank you.
And that concludes our morning session at 11:15.